Good evening, hundreds and thousands of people out there. Are we live? Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Troy City Council. We are going to open the public hearing. I would ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all.
We love you, Bob. Yeah, anyways, all right, we're gonna take a roll call for the public hearing. Councilmember Gully.
Here.
Councilmember Figaroa. Councilmember Steele.
Present.
Councilmember Men. Councilmember Conley Wilson.
Present.
Councilmember Soriano here. Council President Mantello. There are five present, two absent. We will now call the public hearing to order. And Councilmember Gully.
Council President, I move that the council resolve itself into a committee of the whole for the purpose of conducting a public hearing.
Thank you, Councilmember Gully. Clerk, can you read the publication?
There will be city council public hearings on Thursday, November 10th, November 17th, and December 1st, 2022 at 5:45 PM regarding a local law to amend Troy City Charter, Part 5, Article XV, Section C-62, to increase the maximum number of years members of the zoning board of appeals may serve from nine to 10.
Thank you. And just for the record, the corporation council realized that the max in state law, general municipal law is 10 years. So we're now, should this pass after the three public hearings, we will comply or be compared to because we're already complying. It's up to 10 years. So you could do nine, but same thing. So we'll increase it to 10 years. Would anyone in the audience like to address the council on the local law? Okay, I will now take a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Thank you, Councilmember Steele. Is there second? Second, second, Councilmember Conley Wilson, Noel Bieber.
Hi.
Of hosts. Thank you very much. The public hearing is now officially closed.
Committee. Do a roll call first. Councilman Figaroa. Councilmember Steele.
Present.
In attendance, we have councilperson Irene Soranto. We have councilperson, Councilmember Conley Wilson. We have Councilmember Men, and we have myself, Councilmember Gully. And we have Council President Mantello, the ex officio.
Here. Present.
So everybody's here.
Reporting.
I like that. Okay, so tonight, we're gonna talk trash.
We're good at that.
We're good at talking trash. So I'd like to first start with the pledge. We could. I'll ask Councilperson Men to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Andy, hi Chuck, how are you? In attendance, we have the city comptroller, Andy Truski. We got Tom Abbott and sanitation, Renee Panada from recycling, and Chuck Waiton, who is the commissioner of general services, sitting back there listening and everything. Andy, when you, when you go through your process, as you go through the process, please tell us the page that you're focusing on. So everybody keeps up with you and we keep this very efficient and time. Time down.
Time down.
Time down.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Page 182.
We're there, brother.
For new council members to be aware of, based off of the way the code is established for the fee. The fees determine, this is a summary of how the fee is calculated, which is the total appropriations in the budget less other revenues, which is anything other than the per unit fee. And then a calculation of the total eligible units. This year was three point, just under 3,864,000 divided by 15,337 is $250 a unit. $252 a unit represents both the fair share district, which is primarily downtown, along with every other surrounding pickup area. So it encompasses both areas of it. The unit calculation in the middle of the page, total estimated units of 18,741 were the total units being collected as of the date the budget was issued. Exempt value, exempt properties of 3,000, these units of 33,404 is the actual amount of adjustments done in the 2022 fiscal year as of the date the budget was issued. We switched our practice of estimating exempt units as part of the 2022 budget to be that of the prior year, not looking at averages from years past because of the fluctuation we have seen in the last several years of new adjustments coming, primarily through private collection. So to ascertain a better estimate for the next year, we use the current year numbers.
Andy?
Yes.
Um, oh, I'm so sorry, Chair. It's a, I'm so used to the finance, sorry, Chair. Chair.
Go ahead, Council President Mantello.
Thank you, Councilmember Gully. A couple of things I noticed, Andy. Okay, obviously, the $33 increase. Not happy about that at all, as you know. But last year, our units, bloop, 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 it looks like, I'm looking at the estimated units, it looks like last year was 18,685, but the exempt valuations were 2,980. And this year, it looks like they jumped up about 500 to 3404. What's that, Chair, if you did too?
Primarily private collection.
So that many folks jumped.
Primarily, yes.
That's astounding. That's, that's a big number. Additionally, the local revenues last year, Andy, they're down by about 40K. We had 830,000 last year. And we're at 798 this year. I'm not sure what that is.
We, so if we go to page 18, we can dress that on page 183.
Fair enough. And then, you know, I guess the increase you're estimating is going to jump at about $400,000. Is that pretty much what you're looking for to cover 2023s?
Correct. So, yes.
All right. And then last year, I put in parentheses, the 15,000, we have 15,705, the net taxable valuation. This year, it's 15,337. I put in parentheses, 549 units last year. What was that? Do you know what that note might have been?
It's a good question. Let me.
I'm thinking maybe that's how many jumped ship where this year we have another. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Now we have another 500 on top of that. So you're talking 1,000 units have jumped ship in two years. That's what I'm thinking.
I don't have 549 on my sheets from last year.
Okay. I'll, I'll find it. I'll look back at 2021. You know, I'm sure that's where I got that 549. But, you know, I guess the biggest concern for me, like just overall, Andy, clearly. And, you know, I know that you're thinking people are going to come back to the city, but that trend does not seem to be happening. And our sanitation, I mean, it just keeps going up and up and up and up. I mean, we started, as you know, back in 2017, temporary, then became permanent. But every year, it's like 15, 18. Now, this year's the biggest jump, 33 bucks. I mean, at some point, something's gotta give. I mean, it's just.
It's, as I mentioned to you the other day, there's nothing. The increase is very unfortunate. Certainly, the unit situation is troublesome. There's no disputing that as well. You're gonna see in the next couple of pages that this, the, the cost increases are almost exclusive, the significant ones are exclusive to that permanent salaries and benefits. And well, I'm gonna specifically point those lines out as we go through.
Okay.
The departments.
And I figure we go through it. And just one other thing overall, I was looking at the third quarter, we have close to 85% in. And we're at 4.2 mil for the garbage fund revenues, but in this year's budget, we're anticipating 5 mil. Do we anticipate 800 coming in? I mean, obviously, the people that don't pay, it goes on the taxes, so it's not gonna go into the garbage.
No, it does. It does. So revenues are recognized in the garbage fund when they're billed, not when they're paid.
Right.
So when you when there's, when you look, and it's the same for water and sewer. So it's really a two-front analysis it's done. It's the quarterly report, right, that shows budget to actual, which is off of billings. And then the other analysis is unpaid year over year, which essentially ends up being the re-levee report that you, that you'll get on December, you know, for approval on December 15th. And what I look at there is the unit count and to see if that's consistent. We send out as many delinquent letters as we can to encourage payment.
Right.
It's just a matter of how do you encourage residents to pay? Because at the end of the day, the general fund is responsible then for paying the garbage fund the re-levee irregardless if the property owner pays that tax or not. That's, that's a rule from the state. If it's a re-leveed item, the general fund must make the originating fund haul and then bears the responsibility. It's just like a school tax lien that we get from Troy School District. It's treated in the exact same manner.
Do you anticipate Andy needing that $5 million mark?
I hope so. It's gonna come down to the, the adjustments. And the exemptions.
And real quick, I did notice on the bonds earlier in, in the budget, page six, there's bans for the garbage. Will you get into that tonight?
That was on that summary page from last week for the purchase of the garbage trucks, along with, there is a bond resolution approved for improvements at the Alamo site.
Okay, but for 2023?
No new bond resolutions at this time. Just what has been previously approved.
Okay. Now, good picture. Okay.
Andy. Looking at the exemptions growing is is a little frustrating. Do you see any transition in that moving towards the future? I mean, these, these special deals have gotta I've gotta end at some point. What I've looked at, everybody else's fee after that special promotion is higher than what we charge for sanitation and garbage. So even with the increase, it's still less than what somebody pays after they get that special, you know, worm and hooks promotion. Do you know, have you been tracking any of that, see when that starts to kind of fluctuate or end and how, if there's any anticipation of how many, how many homes we might get back on over the next 12 months?
We can look at it. We track. We keep a spreadsheet of everyone's private contract that they send in. That's to monitor. It's also, to be fair to the property owner, that if you sign up with a, with a private contractor for three years, they don't want to send their contract in every three, every year for three years. And I think that's a pretty reasonable situation. That way, we also can monitor when their contracts end. If we don't get a renewal, then we would send them a proated bill or wait, see where they're at. Do I know of what happened? You know, there's certainly been conversations about what some private haulers have done on their renewal contracts. And they are very sizable increases, and it is more than the monthly cost we pay at the city.
Councilperson Figaroa.
What would you say the the main issue is why the fees are, are going up? Like, what, what, what would you say, like, I mean, obviously, there's been an increase. What is the, what does it mean, you know, the main problem on why are we facing those increases?
So for 2023, it's the units. This is in no particular order. The units, the permanent, the salary increases that are in for next year's budget, and the health insurance. There's a it's a little, it's different when you look at this fund in comparison to the general fund or the water fund because of the size of the budget. So a dollar in the garbage fund equates to a much smaller amount than that of, the, the fee moving a dollar is a very low dollar amount on the expenditure side. Talking, if I remember right, I think it's 40 to 50. I could pull it exactly. It's like 40 to 50,000 that it starts to move it. So when you have a health insurance account that increases to $130,000 alone, that's gonna start driving the cost up. It's those three factors alone in next year's budget that are driving the savings.
Okay, thank you. Andy. Would I be reading this right, that we expect to bill out 15,337 homes?
Units.
Units, okay, units, I call it. And there's a $32 increase, which leaves us over a half a million dollars in additional funds needed to run the sanitation program. And that's all built into contractual salaries and pensions or anything else that?
Principally. The principal increases came in, then 100 and 800 miles.
Kind of crazy.
And Chair, you know, on that, now you're talking in the past two years, close to 1,000 units. Yeah. Chair?
Council President.
Oh, cool. Oh, Andy, 183, we'll go through that line by line.
Yeah.
Oh.
Do you have a question?
Chair.
Councilperson Men.
Um. I know that these are like, we've, we've spoken about this in the past, but there is a maximum number of units per building that the city will pick, pick up for, correct? Six?
That's the maximum number right now that the city will pick up for.
And then they're obligated to go to private trash?
Yes.
Okay. Um, is there wiggle room with that? Popping it up to eight or nine and then open up the revenue stream from additional units that are in one, one parcel?
I wouldn't be opposed to that. The problem is, the more units you have, the more cans that they're gonna have, and that's the more trash that the garbage that they put out.
Yep.
And recycling. So that's, that would be a problem on our end because they'd all be paying the same fee per unit and essentially be putting out more waste than a single family home.
Yeah. And I know, like, I know that the city can't compete because we can't offer with some of the private, at least in the multi-unit, because we can't offer dumpsters.
Right.
Um.
Not right now, we couldn't offer dumpsters. In the future, I mean, that's something we can look at. The problem that I, that right off the bat is the fact that it's, it will be 252 a unit. And when you go private, you're allowed to get as many cans as they want for one set fee for one unit, for instance, and be able to put three units of garbage in that can in combination. So you know, that's where the resident is essentially saving money to go private, but we've definitely found where people are coming back to our service because, you know, it is, we're there all the time. We're, we're here.
Yeah.
Uh, we're not just picking up their garbage and recycling, we're going right into the leak bags. We're collecting their bulk. So you know, we're just a phone call away to where a resident may not have to, you know, wait for, wait on us. They'll be waiting for a private collector to come and pick up the item, which is even on the bulk waste aspect is a lot more expensive than what we charge.
Oh, I know from personal experience, you know, buildings that I have that have too many units for private service or for, for a city of Troy service, I have to use private and it's, the quality is not the same.
Uh, I would love to go bigger, you know, if we were gonna take on a bigger capacity. You know, with units, I'd love to talk about that in the future. I don't know if we could talk about that. You know, for what we already have been prepared for, but you know, if we could certainly increase our, our, our finances by doing that, I'd be open to that and also open to, you know, discussing how we can obviously operate bigger trucks, bigger dumpsters, and get into that sort of collection service. And I certainly have the manpower to do it right now. These guys, what they do every day, it's really unbelievable. So I don't think it's, it would be off the table for me.
And, and Chair, that maybe, if, if that's something that you would wanna consider at a future non-budget related meeting?
Yeah, you know, let me ask you a question. Of those exemptions, how many of those are a six-plus units that are just getting commercialized service?
That I don't, I don't have the unit count with me of, I just have grand totals.
Yeah. So, you know, my first thought would be to find out how many of those commercial pieces we have and how many of these exemptions are residential. So then you could really look to see if there's a value there by putting some sort of program for that commercial pickup. Because then if you start dumpsters, of course, now you have to get trucks that can pick up dumpsters. I don't think we have any of those. So that'd be something, that'd be another investment we have to make. So there, there's a lot to look at in running that type of process, and it has nothing to do with the budget tonight. But I would definitely, I would definitely look at that if we, if we look at the numbers and say, hey, you know, this makes sense. We have so many commercial pieces. Maybe we need to look in that direction, but you know, it's all.
I'll just, I'll just note this for that, that conversation. It is not a dollar for dollar. It's not, it's not units come on and it's 100% dropping. It's not just 100% go-in of revenue, right?
Right.
You're gonna add a very minimum after adjusting tip fees. But that's just the, and that's the starting point of that conversation. Plus, what's the capital investment? And I'm not trying to disparage that idea. I just, I don't want it to be perceived that it is every, every unit that goes in, it's, you know, if an eight unit goes in, eight times 252 is gonna go in as revenue because it's gonna be an offsetting expenditure that has to go in.
Yeah.
Or we're not budgeting accurately. Those are the two choices.
Right. Well, I'm just saying, when you look at all those numbers, and you can make, hey, is that something worth, worth looking to pursue or not pursue? You know, is it better just leave the commercialized end of the city to the private haulers? And maybe we just think about raising the fee for getting a private hauling permit to recoup some of the revenue in that way. Because they're gonna charge more and we're gonna get less. We ought to just kind of think about that as we move forward.
And just to, because it was brought up in comparison to other places. One private hauler charges $324 annually for a 96-gallon barrel, and another private hauler charges $312 annually for a 96-gallon barrel.
Is that the size barrels we're giving to everybody in the city, 96 gallon?
Yes.
Okay, so that'll be, we'll be very, very competitive with that number when people finally let all the smoke mirror clear.
And again, it's, it's just, I'm not, I'm not disputing the substantial increase. I'm just using that as a comparison.
Sure.
Marker.
Chair.
Councilperson Men.
Um, well, and Andy, it's really helpful that you.
Um, well, and Andy, it's really helpful that you allow, like you have that data, the 96 gallon barrel is allowing people to comparison shop. And I know Renee with the recycling newsletter and the communication with the public. Pointing that out that the city of Troy for your, you know, under six unit home is better value for trash. Break the contract, come back. Um, you know, like communicating that because in Andy and I spoke earlier today and the formatting of the bill doesn't allow additional information to be inserted. And it's not cost effective to do an insert with garbage bills. So using. You know, using like that communication piece and luring people back because, you know, honestly, like I don't run the math with. Like my private dumpsters and doing the math to figure out exactly, is this a better deal or not? You know, I'm. Wish I had the time, but it is something that I think when it's obvious, people take advantage. So.
Good. All right. So we'll go back to the budget, get on that. That's a great point. Counsel President Men, uh, Councilman Soriano.
Um, Andy, I have a question. So the other areas that you were comparing that charge over the $300 a year. Do they provide like a free bulk pickup at least once a year? They're not?
Nope.
Cause there are areas that still do provide the free bulk pickup though, at least just the one, once a year. And I know that we did that at one point, but we did away with it. Um. So I, I.
Yeah, I realize, no, no.
That was more. That was more toward uh, leaning toward our spring cleanup than we've done in the past. When we first came up with the garbage fee um. And the bulk fees. We never, we never, we never went back to. The free collection, uh, the, the free collection that we did in the spring. So that changed. When we came up with the garbage fee, you have to understand that at one point nobody paid for garbage. And nobody paid for their bulk waste. Nobody paid for recycling. So we come up with garbage fee and then we come up fees based on the bulk and per item. Uh, we never essentially went backwards to give everybody that free service for, you know, once a year or. You know, for any like the time, you know, before, before the fee actually became available. So.
And that's where all that, this illegal dumping is happening also because people don't want to pay for the whole.
Well, that's true. And that's why, I mean, it's hitting this. We got the litter enforcement officers there. Um. They're out there, they're doing their due diligence with, you know, going through uh, the material to try to get what they can get out to provide evidence. Uh, for additional violations and also police evidence, but um. Illegal dumping goes on all over place, not just in Troy. I haven't seen where it's increased. Um, I personally seen where it's, there's a decrease in it and major hotspots throughout the city have cleaned up. Is it perfect? No, it's not perfect, but um. We are relying on the LPOs to do their job, try to get whatever, whatever information they can get. Um. Out of the trash, so to speak. Um. Get the violations out and uh, you know, go from there, but. You know, it's an effort. It's a community effort and it's, it's, it's a, you know, public works effort. Um, so we, you know, people can essentially, you know, work with us on how to, you know, curb illegal dumping because we have people. That illegal dumping is essentially being allowed on their property. And they're not even calling the police. They're still expecting us to do, to do something about it. And. Uh, so you're seeing some areas like that where it's sort of a, a waiting pattern to where we're waiting for some, for them to do something. You know, to make a move and get it collected because that's what we do to the residents. You know, uh, hold them accountable and some of these businesses don't want to do that. So then we do get involved and then have to charge them and then get it picked up. But now some of these violations. Um. You know, at that point it is a violation because they haven't done their good work. It's as far as trying to please, get a police report. So some of those violations are. At upwards of 12, $1,500.
Chair.
Can I just alter that please? Just, just keep in mind too, illegal dumping in the past was just picked up and taken care of, no one knew about. Now we're bringing it to light. Part, sometimes a part of people's job may be to cut their costs in illegal dumps somewhere instead of actually paying for what it is. And that's what we're finding out throughout the city. We're doing everything we can. LPOs are doing what they can. Sanitation doing what they can. It is something that we are dealing with that we're trying to spearhead and deal with head on.
Yeah.
So I would, I would just make one comment. I think that in that case, I would say that the example in the fine for dumping is not high enough. The issue is that if you make people really nervous about getting one of those infractions, if you make the penalty high enough that it really hurts. They're going to limit themselves to doing it and you'll take out all the weak guys who are thinking about it. Um, because people only learn through pain or pleasure. Uh, and there's no other way about it. We've got to think about a way to do, because you can't, you can't fly a drone all over the city. You go, hey, that guy's dumping. And we can't get real time action because most people won't even report it when it happens. They come home and find it in their alley and they tell us later. So. There is no real functionable way to catch somebody dumping unless you accidentally run across them. Or if there happens to be a camera, which most of them aren't even clear enough to pick up a plate on a vehicle. So really I think the only other option is to make the penalty so severe for dumping that they'll want to go to Cohoes or somewhere else. They won't want to dump in our city. That's the only thing I could think of because we can't catch them.
Sure. Chair.
Counsel President, or yeah, Councilman Figaro.
How do we come up with these uh, with these fees, these violation fees? Like, how do we determine the amount that uh, you know, that is made? Okay.
It's in the code.
Okay.
So what I will say to that is um, there is a push on a statewide level to have uh, different fee structures and um. The, the way that it's addressed, I don't know what the difference is called, but right now it has to go before court. And they're talking about, is that civil versus criminal or something like that?
Yeah.
But there's been discussion downstate on that and um, I'm waiting to see what happens with that. So we can model an ordinance. If it doesn't become a statewide. So that's um, one thing I wanted to address. The other thing is Jim, you and I a couple of years ago. Had talked about also having diversion events. That was just before the pandemic. That's also something that we're hoping to bring on in 2023, something that we've been, been discussing about Irene that we were talking about for that is. At least once, if not twice a year, have items that are viable, meaning whether it's something that uh, Troy or United Ministries will take or. Capital Region Furniture Bank or whatever, and having a collection day where people can have the materials that are usable. Um, also working with uh, you know, our own internal recycling department and working with vendors as well. And they help divert a whole lot of weight. We used to do that in the school district I worked for and each event would take in between 50,000, 70,000 pounds. It's a great deal of diversion weight and that again has zero cost to it. So that's something we're definitely considering.
Great. Now. Andy, next spot in the budget, where are we going?
Page one, excuse me, page 183.
Um, Chair.
Counsel President.
Yep. Um, I, I will just say, just overall, the 252 in this $33 increase. Um, you know, I, I see it firsthand. I don't know about, um, I'm sure Councilmember Men does not pass that clause. To the tenants, but I do really see this $33 increase really hurting tenants ultimately. Don't get me wrong. Households, it, it's going to hurt families, but it's really going to trickle down onto the tenants. So. I really see a problem with the $33 increase because the landlords are going to pass it on to the tenants. And I really see it as, as just a, a very regressive fee. Just a comment. Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome. Andy.
So 183 is the revenues. I'll just hit them very quickly individually. Uh, garbage fees, that's the per unit. Non-fair share district. Total revenue generated from the proposed $252.00. Garbage violations budgeted at 335,000, a decrease from the 2022 estimates of 350,000. The increase, we significantly increased the revenues in the 2022 budget and just to be honest, it was overstated at 350. Right, right sizing it down to 335,000. Bulk pickup. Was reduced from 200,000 to 165,000 for the same reasons as garbage violations. Commercial pickup. Hundred, 172,000, that's the fair share districts, share of the $250 per unit. Interest and penalties maintain the same at 150,000 based off prior year, well, excuse me, prior year. Uh, actual receipts. Hauler permits, we recognize that revenue as it's paid, not as it's billed. 23,000 is based off of the anticipated billing and collection in the 2023 fiscal year of outside haulers who transport through the city.
Chair. Can, can we, uh, thank you. Andy, I apologize. Before you move on. Um, the third quarter, I think you lumped it in together. So it's hard for me to break down. Where are we? Um, third quarter with the garbage violations and the hauler permits? And the commercial pickup?
Third quarter garbage, you said garbage violations? Who, two, six? No, one, 151,00296.
So that's very low. Um, do we anticipate? How much percentage in?
Of paid, I don't have that with me. That's billed.
I mean, you know, for budgeting, yeah, for uh. Well, in 2021, we got 307. So that's the actual, um. You know, you brought down for 2023, but that's very low.
I think that there's an anticipation ramp up of enforcement and billing next year. There's also been instances, to my understanding, where the litter enforcement, litter enforcement officers or what LPOs have been mandated to be in-house. To do mandatory trainings, um, that the, now that those have been completed, they will be out on the street more, to my understanding.
Hmm.
Chuck.
Um, can Andy get that there too?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, the other two hauler permits. 22,800.
Okay. So that's right about there. And what about the commercial pickup, Andy?
So commercial pickup is at 114,883 with still the fourth quarter bills to go out. And just to note, that is based off of this year's per unit fee.
Okay. So it looks like garbage violations really are, are low.
Yes.
Hmm. That's not good.
Are you done?
Yeah.
Chuck, I just had a question. Uh, how many days do our litter officers, how many days did our litter officers spend in training last year or this year? How many days were they actually in training?
Well, we, we, we stacked, uh, we staggered them. Um, so. One was actually on. Well, at least five days apiece. Uh, what we have been doing is asking them to, one, be at city hall to deal with the individuals that come in in regards to their disputes. Uh, so at least there's a litter patrol officer that can actually handle that, deal with that, talk to them. And possibly come to some sort of end result with that individual. We are looking to actually. Next year, get them on the street more, maybe have a day where we can schedule, each LPO will schedule X amount of individuals to come in. Deal with their disputes, almost like traffic ticket Tuesday here, uh. What to do, to deal with their disputes. So one litter patrol officer might have two hours, schedule 15 minute blocks. Get these individuals out, get them on the books, get it done, move on, get them back on the street.
Renee, don't we have somebody who handles that interaction with people who have violations? Isn't there somebody in the department that handles that?
There. He's, we do have clerks that come, that deal with the general public, but sometimes the general public wants something right down in there. So instead of just stating at that time, what we, what we're trying to do is actually move the process along. You come in, talk to an LPO, maybe if it's not their case, they talk to another LPO, get it, get a resolution, move on. Now we're going to have the clerks just basically take the information, take the name, get it to the LPOs and have them deal with it directly. We're trying to streamline the process. That's all we're trying to do.
All right, thank you.
And Chair?
Counsel President.
Um, you know, regarding uh, just overall the barrels, what's the game plan to um, unfold that whole process? Um, does, do you guys have a game plan how you're going to roll out and who gets what and, you know? Um. How, how do you plan to do that?
So the rollout is um, would be done with the assist of the vendor and they would do it in either four or five drops. And so as soon as we order them, it will be a six to eight week turnaround. We know. Based on Tom's assessment, how many barrels exist in the city and what addresses they're at. And so they would base the drop offs on uh, zones and they would work with us on getting that done.
And is that going to go hand in hand with billing? You know, like how's that whole process? You know, because obviously you're going to give someone a barrel, but you know, um. They may have private, I mean, it's, it's more complicated, I think, than me and CI.
So I, I, I think that one of the real good things about this is in addition to everyone getting a city issue barrel. Is there'll be a, an audit that in very loose quotes, it's not a, it's not an audit per se, but it's. Essentially becomes an audit to make sure we aren't billing every single person who. Has a barrel, who will end up with a barrel and then we will be able to bill them as, as needed. If they have private collection, we have that data. Um, that's a, as I mentioned before, that spreadsheet that we have has everybody and it's updated. Daily as we get them in. Or people come back because I mean, obviously there's been a swing down, but there have been people who've come back that then we adjusted the other way and then they get a pro rated bill for the rest of the year.
So say like the two families, each side that didn't have the barrels, because obviously the east side didn't have the black barrels. Um, are, are you going to actually, do you have like? The data for how many units are in each home and who's private, who's? You know, with the waivers, you do have that data. So just, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, in one spot, no. We have, what we use is to bill, we actually, the whole billing process for the per unit fee. Not outside the fair share district, yeah, everybody else, that, that's entirely 100% mirrored off of property taxes. So what? In its RPS, the assessor software, we have a column for the number of units that we're billing off of. And that's what starts the whole billing process. Then in the accounting system, we have the data, it's, it serves as a database of sorts. That we can pull reports out of to see the. Where the adjustments go. And then we would be able to somehow in Excel. Link those two together to net down to who just has, who has city collection. Right? You would, you would start pulling out private collection, you'd pull out. That would probably would be the only one, I would think. Um. You know, enhanced star is still that exemption. They still obviously have city pickup. So we would look at it on a case by case basis, which is why we code all of our exemptions. By type, but it's not just the generic field that we use.
Yeah. I mean, I think it sounds a lot simpler than it's going to be. I'm, I'm just.
Oh, well, doing that is not simple by any means, that whole linking in Excel, but can it be done? Yes.
So are you, is your office coordinating with the vendor?
Uh, the coordination with the vendors coming out of Chuck's office.
But the billing obviously has to have some.
Yes, it will work in conjunction with Chuck.
I have a quick question. I'd like to see us get back on to the budgetary items, but are the barrels going to be coded so that we can track them to an address that we give them to? So that if somebody were to take one, we would know it's, you know?
Each one of them has an RFID code. Um, right now our trucks don't have the capacity to read it, but the resident has the capacity to read it and it's, it's tied to that address. Um, right now, our trucks don't have the capacity to read it, but the resident has the capacity to read it and it's tied to that address. So if somebody reports their barrel missing, it's coded to that specific address. So when it's replaced, it would have a new code that's put into it. And as well, the other thing that the barrel program will allow us to do is each property, each unit is tied to one barrel. And so if somebody says they want another barrel, they have to pay for it. And it would be coded based on that RFID code with that address if it's additional. So then it's additional revenue that's generated.
Great, thank you.
And, you know, Chair, because we're appropriating ARPA, the million dollars, I did see it as a budget issue.
Yeah, good.
Thank you.
All right. Andy?
Just to go quickly through the other revenues, sales tax, the nine thousand dollars is the paper bag tax collections that are done in the city under state law. Those monies must be used directly, they can't be used for anything other than a specific purpose. So there's appropriation in the budget of nine thousand dollars to match that revenue. Uh, seven thousand dollars is an annual, excuse me, annual payment that the city receives from the Rubin Foundation. Health insurance contributions from employees, state grants or the DEC grants that are offset fifty percent of costs primarily in Department eighty-one eighty-nine. And then the six hundred forty-seven thousand rounded up, six hundred forty-seven thousand dollar transfer from the general fund to the garbage fund is for the cost of eighty, the Department eighty-one seventy, which is municipal collection. Are there any, are there any other questions about revenues?
No.
Uh, so very quickly, before we get into specific expenditures to answer some questions from earlier, Councilmember Figueroa, the cost for one dollar of the garbage fee is fifteen thousand dollars of expenditures. Every dollar equals fifteen thousand. So I say that to say total expenditures in the garbage fund are up four hundred and three thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars. Code one, which is wages, is up a hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred thirty dollars or thirty percent of the expenditure increase. Code eight, which is employee benefits, is up one hundred sixty-seven thousand nine hundred forty-three dollars. That is forty-two percent of the expenditure increase. And debt service costs in the garbage fund is up twenty-five thousand four hundred thirty-eight dollars. That is six percent of the appropriation increase. Those three categories alone make up seventy-eight percent of the total expenditure increase next year.
What makes up the other twenty-two percent, Andy?
Codes two, three, and four. That does not include the increase in the payment from the garbage fund to the general fund, which is for services rendered in the general fund, which could, which is DPW garage, administrative staff, my, my office, the garbage fund reimburses the general fund, for example, for the comptroller's office time and treasurer's office time for billing and collection. Which is, it's the same method of calculation that we've used since the garbage fund came into existence.
Any questions from the council? Okay, Andy, let's move on.
So we'll, um, unless the people have quite, so the first couple of departments that you see in here are the garbage funds portion of insurance or uh, third-party administration for health insurance and workers' comp and the contingency account. Jumping ahead to page one hundred ninety-two.
Um, I did, uh, uh, Chair.
Council President.
Yep, uh, one eighty-nine, I did notice um, that we're increasing the contingency, Andy, to sixty-five K from sixty-seven hundred. Um, and it's, you know, it says to support unanticipated uh, expenses. Why are we increasing that so much?
So the contingent, so the twenty-twenty-two budget you see in the document is the adjusted budget as of June, as I'm sorry, as of October seventh. That, so that we had transferred money out, the contingency for twenty-twenty-two originally was sixty. I'm in the wrong year. The contingency in the garbage fund to start the twenty-twenty-two fiscal year was sixty-nine thousand two hundred forty-three dollars. We actually decreased it forty-two hundred dollars.
So we took from then through the year.
Correct.
Where did it go?
Uh, if I recall correctly, it went to temporary salaries, vehicle expense for gasoline and other places, but I do believe those are the two primary places it was appropriated to.
I did just look it up here, Ray, it was sixty-nine, prior year, twenty twenty-one was thirty-three, okay. Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome. Andy?
So page one ninety-two is Department eighty-one sixty, that's the, this represents the cost for residential collection in the city. The increase you see in permanent salaries is contractual. Not much, not much variation, as you'll see throughout, and twenty thousand dollar increase in tipping fees and a uh, increase of four of seventy-five hundred dollars in dues and subscriptions as for the recollect software system. And the services from other funds is the payment from the garbage fund to the general fund that increased twelve thousand dollars. And then benefits, I'm just gonna note, there is no other singular department that has a health insurance increase like this department where it increased from three hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars to four hundred ninety-two thousand dollars in the twenty-twenty-three fiscal year.
Can you give us an explanation what you think might be the reason this is so big in this department?
Employees switched from, either employees didn't have coverage and switched to family plans or switched from single plans to family plans.
Chair?
Council President.
Yep, um, I did notice that, Andy, and you and I had talked about that the other day. Um, I did notice too, the dues and subscriptions, not that I'm trying to nethal and dime, but they are looking for an increase, a nine K, um, is something planned?
It's the cost, it's the annual cost of the recollect software system that they use.
The software?
Software, yes.
And obviously, you know, regarding uh, the tipping fees, the more we can get Renee and her folks out there to hammer home the importance of recycling, um, obviously, the more those tipping fees are going to decrease, so, um, you know. I did notice, so the third quarter, they did go down uh, in the third quarter report.
One thing that we can't estimate or predict properly is the fact that annually we see increases from county waste. And so, um, when I, for the first two years I was here, one year it was forty cents increase, and the next year it was sixty, sixty cents increase. And last year it was um, three dollars, and this year it was six dollars per ton. So what I'm seeing happen is we wind up upside down in terms of we're decreasing what we're producing, but the fees are going up, so that's what Andy and I were accounting for in that, so that we're making sure to capture what we need to put aside in terms of the fact that it went up by that dramatic. It was a nine and a half percent increase in what our tip fees were.
And Renee, while I have you, um, what percentage are we at now for recycling? I know we can statistically estimate the percentage. Um, I I'd wanna say like, maybe in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, we might have been at six, fourteen percent. Um, but I know we've gone up since then, what are we at now?
So it it is a there are very inaccurate comparisons, so if we looked at real numbers in twenty seventeen, we're actually at a six and a half percent back then.
Oh, gee.
Um, our real numbers in terms of on a, an annualized basis, it's about nine percent. Um, but that's not including the things that aren't captured as single stream. So, um, I've also been doing, not allocations, um, an annual aggregation of data. And so we capture all of the other things that are not going into our bins. We're actually about thirty-eight percent of recycling because things like um, our asphalt millings, uh, things like our sludge, things like our sweepings that are taken out of the waste stream that we're not paying the tip fees on uh, is not included in our single stream. So if that's something that you're interested in, I have the numbers on that I can share with you.
Yeah, I I love um, stats, I mean, what's the average? I know there's an average that they put out there from where municipalities as a target. I I could have sworn it was like twenty-one percent, but if we're only at nine, it can't be that.
It it is, and it it really varies across the board. And I I wouldn't want to give one specific. I think from municipality to municipality, even within New York State, you're seeing a really wide swing on that, and it also depends on what they're including. At one point, Albany said they were at fifty-eight percent and they weren't. So I I I think that it it's a matter of what we're including. So again, I I keep statistics on a monthly basis on that, so I can break it down for you in terms of what we take, you know, what we recycle for metals, for tires, for the sweepings, and any of that, I can give you the backup data.
Fair enough, thanks.
Anyone else, any questions? Andy?
Page one ninety-seven, municipal pickup.
Oh, um, I apologize, um, one ninety-five, Chair.
Council President.
Yep, uh, one ninety-five, I did notice, so right now, the only position we have open uh, in residential pickup is one sanitation.
Yes.
Okay, so that we're only vacant one.
Still Monday.
It's King Phil Monday. Very good, so your fall after Monday. Thank you.
Department eighty-one seventy. There wasn't a significant amount of fluctuation in the expenditures and and just to note, this department is fully paid for by the general fund itself. I'm not sure if there's specific questions about accounts, but um, any decrease in this department would be a decrease inevitably to the general fund.
Chair.
Council President.
I did notice, uh, one ninety-seven, uh, consultant services. Who are we paying, is that for the land bill or what consultant services? And there's, there's two lines.
So one of the lines is for the landfill, and that's because we've been working with engineers, making sure that our pumps are up and running. We've been working with our engineering department and a consultant locally, as well as a consultant on the national level to make sure that we're staying within the parameters that the DEC requires of us. Um, so that's the separated outline item. The other one includes household hazardous waste and any of the other vendors that we're using to divert materials. So like our tire uh, recycler, um, the folks that take our metals and our electronics. We get a credit for the metals, but we pay for the electronics, but it's the same vendor for those two items, there's an offset. But any of those, we're paying through that so that it's easier to track for the DEC, what is diverted materials. So I would refer to them as consultants rather than tip fees, because it used to be aggregated into the tip fee amounts before.
Hmm, okay, that's, that confused me a little. So where is the offset in the revenues?
So anything that has to do with household hazardous waste, we receive a fifty percent rebate on from the DEC. And then in addition to that, um, this year in working with the county, there was also an additional twenty-five percent offset that we're seeing. So our costs are going down on those line items.
So is that reflected, what line item is that, is that reflected in the tipping fees or where's?
So that's the four oh nine line item we were just talking about.
Oh, so you just take it off of that line item? Because that's an expenditure, so you're taking it off, you're not putting a revenue in.
There is a revenue offset.
Andy knows that.
The revenue, so the hundred percent of the expenditures in there and the fifty percent offset is in the state grant revenues.
Thank you, Andy, that's what I was looking for. More of the accountant. Thanks.
Are there any other questions on Department eighty-one seventy?
Okay, let's move along.
Page two oh one, eighty-one seventy-five bulk pickup. Uh, expenditure, the increase in expenditures is driven entirely by codes one and code eight, by salaries and benefits.
Chair?
Council President.
Yep, the only question I had on uh, this um, area is what are we paying, who who are we paying consultant fees for, for the bulk?
The composting program.
Okay, so that's so upset.
That that grant is not in revenues because USDA pays the vendor directly. So the sixteen thousand five hundred is, it is our share of the cost.
That's a lot of money to pay for a composting program, wouldn't you think? No? Hi, yeah. Okay.
Any other questions about bulk? Department eighty-one eighty-nine, I will note, is also fifty percent reimbursed to the state grant revenue account. And at the risk of being rhetorical, any cost increases that you see in in total are driven by wages and benefits.
Amazing.
Oh, um, I apologize, Chair.
All right, Council President.
I did notice, um, one of the positions was getting a ten thousand dollar increase. Page one nine five, the litter enforcement solid waste.
The step, contractual step increase.
Okay, I saw the increase and I'm like, yeah. Yeah, I know, see it?
But similar to the general fund, we we capture salary savings, which you'll see on page one ninety-four at the bottom, to account for the interim, that nets everything down to the time period they're at the current step to when they get the step ball.
So how how long has the person been here to get stepped at?
I'd have to look, but I'm guessing it's probably the five-year ball.
A five-year?
Yes.
Chuck.
Have we had that position that long now, the litter enforcement?
Yes, I believe so.
So five years. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Don't we like that, save that money. Let's go.
Add answers, that's good.
Uh, and then the rest, the workers' comp, that's, we, we're self-insured, so that's a, you know, best estimate. And then their back is bond, is debt, but some of the other funds that is now consolidated down to a inter-fund transfer out, out to the debt service fund. Are there any other questions about garbage fund?
Councilmember, any questions?
Nope.
Okay, Andy, let's roll.
Picture, all right, thank you. Thanks.
Uh, Chair, actually.
Councilmember Figueroa.
Really quick, I just wanna thank you guys, because I know it's not an easy task, and the response of Tom is incredible, like, yesterday I had a call to Tom and he didn't respond back, but the response back was, the garbage is gone. The guy, the guy sent me the pictures and all that, so I was like, I don't even need to text Tom, because I see like, he he texts me right away, showed me the pictures out in the alley, and the garbage was gone, so I I appreciate.
All right, thank you very much, I mean, I really try to be proactive out there.
Yeah.
If I get a text or an email, I am all over it, I have, I'm one hundred percent, one hundred percent of the time out there. And I think everybody in this room can vouch for that.
Uh, okay, one hundred percent.
Oh, yes. You're very responsive.
Whatever does not get handled today, I have to do tomorrow on top of those complaints and that added work. So I try to clean the plate today.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Putting fires.
So thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you all.
Stick around, Andy.
Yep, Andy, you're next.
Chair, motion to adjourn.
There you go.
Motion to adjourn, second.
You can.
All right, I'll.
Steve's second.
I was just trying to get his name on it. All right, so Councilperson Figueroa's second. All in favor?
I. I would request a.
She was speaking for me, we're good, we're adjourned.
While we have the changing of the card.
Yeah, um, do you have public safeties? Yes. Where are you guys? I'm cleaning that.
I am public safety.
Yes, it's, um, you.
I can't tell.
Sue's the chair and, um, I bring, I think. It's Sue, you, and Ibrine, I thought, yeah. No, I'll look it up. Oh, Emily, okay. I'm sorry. Public safety, I'm not on it. I, I, I.
I had this, I had the sheet, I just can't, you know. It was changed mid-stream, so we've gotta kind of regroup here. You know, I'm not a good grouper. Everybody loves somebody sometimes. You guys are too young to know that song.
Your sex science and technology and your water, right?
Yeah.
Hold on.
Yeah.
DPU.
I know. When I say, when I say DPU at Red Clear, they're like, what is that? I'm like, water. Oh.
Oh, there's my mask. Anybody need a mask?
Or um, see, it's funny, like the terminology here with where, you know, sanitation, sanitation, right? We call it solid waste.
I'm on public safety. Yeah, we just didn't know who else was in.
We're solid.
And Emily, okay, so I'm the lone wolf, baby.
So. General fund, but and we were even calling budgets. What? Yeah, our budget's like three pages long. Eighty-four.
The public who wish to address the committee on any subject concerning the budget. Please state your name.
Eric Wisher, the president for Uniform Firefighters Association. Uh, I live at thirty Fairfield Road, Troy, New York. Um, I'd like to speak about the fire side of the public safety budget. Um, things are not status quo. Uh, calls are up again as of the end of October, they had eleven thousand five hundred. Um, over eight thousand of that's medical calls. Uh, of those calls, almost eighty percent are transports. Um. We have many facilities that Empire Mohawk used to do calls at, that they no longer do calls. They haven't in a year and a half, maybe even since the beginning of COVID. But we had places like the Elliott up on Tibbetts Avenue, we're over six hundred calls there. We used to never do any of those calls, right? And uh, you know, the Troy Center, it's hundred seventy, the Pines, just shy of two hundred. Um, Heritage House, Eddie Memorial, they're two hundred and sixty calls. The calls keep going up. Here's a, and I can get your copy of this, but this is town colony. Uh, they do a similar amount of EMS calls that we do. They do about twelve thousand EMS calls. We do about ten thousand eight hundred. Um, they don't fight fires. Their paramedics and EMTs don't fight fires. Uh, our guys do. They might do ten calls, go to a fire for three hours and then do five more calls. They run fourteen ambulances for twelve thousand calls. Um, six of them are full-time, the rest of them are part-time for different variations of hours. We run one full-time ambulance and three part-time ambulances and do a lot more work. There's a lot of, um. Good that came out of having medic three on duty, I'll say. We had a fire up on Twenty-first Street where people jumped out of windows. We had that ambulance, was the only ambulance, but it was able to transport people if it wasn't there, we went ahead of it. Uh, guys just made a rescue down on H Street, medic three was there. They were able to help the one guy from truck two throw a thirty-five foot ladder in gangway. One guy's not going to do that by himself. That one that happened if medic three's not there. Um, Morrison Ave Fire, um, three ambulances, the rescue squad and engine two are all out on calls when that fire comes in. You know, at the end, at the end of the day, we're still fire department. We have to put enough people on the scene to put out fires. Um, the chief has said in the past that the NFPA requirement is seventeen people on initial armed assignment. That's for one family house. Uh, it increases immensely for a multi-family house. And then for a strip plaza and a high-rise, uh, we don't meet the requirements for those. Um. In a recent memo here that the chief put out, he uh, he puts in here, I have a lot of the volume of calls and staffing shortage affect the good order of the department. So there's obviously acknowledgement that there's problems with the amount of calls we're doing and the amount of people we have. Uh, we did just get a grant, but it was only to fill the vacancies we have, not to add any people. Um, in the area, Syracuse was added two guys who staff another ambulance. Amsterdam added a guy to keep an ambulance on duty. Syracuse is in the process of adding two more guys to put an ambulance, another ambulance on duty. Um, we talked about a study, hasn't been done. City of Whistler did a study. Um, city paid for it and many things come out as deficient in the fire department. And one of those things, and I can quote from the article here, was they're adding sixty firefighters to the current staffing they have to bring their engines and trucks up to four guys each. We run three and two, but we're not even close there, but we're just looking for staffing for ambulants to keep an engine and a truck on duty. And uh, I think the acting chief over there hits a nail on the head. He says, "The funding from FEMA will assist our department in accomplishing its mission to protect the lives and property of the community by increasing daily staffing for safer, safer and more effective fire and emergency response," said Acting Fire Chief Martin Dyer. "We have a growing community and that requires increased resources to ensure we have the personnel and equipment needed." And uh, I think that it's a nail on the head. We're a growing community too. We have done nothing for twenty-five years. We haven't added any staffing, just calls have gone from fifty-nine hundred to just shy of fourteen thousand. If we can keep the pace around, we'll hit fourteen thousand this year or a hundred less. Um, it's obviously an issue. Uh, I've reached out to people. Sue reached out to me after the Twenty-first Street fire. She was concerned. Uh, I didn't get a response back last year when they were talking about the project above Hannaford. Uh, Councilman Cummings said that we shouldn't approve that because the Lassenburg Firehouse already overtaxed the calls. And then we go and approve a well now, standard manufacturing. There's probably another five hundred calls right there between those two places with more coming. And um, I don't know what the answer is, but the it's not going to help around here with morale, retention, hiring people. Um, all the other departments are going to hire this year. And uh, I hope there's enough people left for us to hire next year. We give an exam. But I hope that you address these safety concerns in the budget and increase the manning. And uh, that's all I can ask. I mean, it's, it's in your hands, but I can tell you, and you can talk to probably any guy in any fire out, we'll tell you that we're shorthanded and things aren't safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else from the public wish to address the committee on public safety budget items? Okay, then we'll move forward. We have with us tonight our controller, Andy Petruski, Chief DeWolf and Assistant Chief Barker to discuss the public safety um, police budget. Do we want to start with nine-one-one or do we go right into the police?
So then nine-one-one contract goes up another hundred thousand dollars next year. That's on page.
Eighty-nine.
The nine-one-one contract goes up to a million dollars next year pursuant to the contract. Uh, if I recall correctly, this is the last increase, and then from there on it increases either two percent or three percent a year there forward, but that, that this is a contractual increase similar to that of the increase in twenty-twenty-two.
Any questions for members concerning nine-one-one?
Yes.
Chair.
Nels McGully.
Andy, are we the only municipality in the county paying for that nine-one-one?
That I don't know, but I seem to think that answer is yes. Almost positive that answer is yes.
So it's not realistically spread amongst the whole county, just the city Troy is picking up that tab?
It's the contract negotiated several, several years ago. By several, I mean before twenty-sixteen.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other good council president?
Yep, I think it, I think we talked about this expires in twenty-four.
So the
With the.
The last year delineated in the contract is twenty-three. I think twenty-four is listed with a two percent increase. And then if I recall correctly, the contract says if it's, there's an annual increase of two percent thereafter if it's not renegotiated.
Okay, then um, want to move, move us along, Andy then?
So we'll go to page ninety-one and I'll turn it.
Chair, um, do you think also um, you can hear page eight, nine and ten in the revenues? I did want to talk to the chief about a couple of those. So I don't know when you want to do it, chair, but at some point. Thank you.
Can start, it's up, I'll leave that up to the.
What would you prefer? Let's, let's go to the revenues now and then we'll, we'll hit the expenditures side. So that's page eight.
Yeah, chair, um. My big questions on these was um, chief. Uh, last year, uh, we had talked about the traffic lines. And um, I wrote a note in my last year notes um, that we were going to have an extra car out there. And I've noticed in twenty-twenty-two definitely an escalated um, enforcement uh, with traffic in the city. Um, I think your folks have been out there much more than twenty-twenty-one. And then in twenty-twenty-three, um, I believe it's being decreased, uh, the revenues. So.
It's page nine.
Yeah, so I was kind of surprised only because, you know, I thought that we would continue hopefully that increased enforcement and knowing that last year you have been another for this year um, vehicle out there. So I'm just curious why the revenues are being tracked to go down when in essence it really appears they might potentially should go up.
So the, the revenues were determined. This was a bit of a tricky one to do because there's certainly impacts from the pandemic. And the courts being closed for a prolonged period and then move, if they were on Zoom and then they moved to one person at a time. So there's, it's a bit of a throwout for the last two, when you look at twenty-one, twenty-two to start in twenty. So what, how I came up with that was taking the most recent, there's a trend now that's starting to be set of the monthly payment that we're getting, which is ranging anywhere somewhere in the from twenty-three to twenty-five thousand and then another jump in September of thirty to thirty-eight thousand. Taking those numbers, just those numbers and then annualizing it out and, and coming up with six hundred thousand. Certainly decreasing it, it was merited, you know, you see in there, it was at nine hundred thousand. At one point we brought it down to eight hundred. Uh, but, but taking into consideration current collections to get the best estimate of what we're currently seeing. I'll let the chief talk about the unit. I did want to address why the methodology I used to come up with that number.
That's cool. Um, Andy, before you go to chief, what are we at in the third quarter this year?
Right now we're at one hundred eighty thousand.
That's it?
That's it. But the collections for it, so that, that's actually eight months because they pay, it's a month lag. The first two payments for the year were twelve thousand and thirteen thousand. Then, then it jumped to about twenty-five thousand for April and May, and then hovered around twenty-two to twenty-three thousand payments received in June, July and August, which would have been for May through July. payments received in June, July, and August, which would have been for May through July, and then August's collections jumped again to thirty-eight thousand. So we're starting to see that trend back up, which is how the, the, the six hundred thousand was arrived at.
Mm-hmm. Okay. What's your feelings, Chief? Thank you.
So, uh, part of the problem too, in the beginning of the year was that one of the officers was out for an extended period of time. Um, so that was part of the, part of the issue. Uh, yeah, as far as, uh, us getting our, us getting our money, uh, some of that's out of our hands, you know what I mean? Court gives it to us when they give it to us. The tickets are being written.
They're out there.
They are. They're out there. Uh, the unit is up to three officers now. Um, I'm hoping that I'm able to put another officer in there sometime in April or, or May, uh, you know, because we have a couple more people coming out of the academy. Um, and I want to, I want to move some people around. Also, uh, we're back, we're back in business doing DOT checks. So we're doing that at least, at least weekly, maybe twice weekly now, uh, which is going to, it should generate quite a bit of revenue. So the six hundred figure, I think is, it's, it's good to have that, but we actually do have a chance at, at actually bringing in more money from that. Um, you know, we're, we're hopeful. So, but it's not all about that anyway, right? I mean, that's part of it. I mean, exactly. So, so the thing that I I really instilled in, in the officers was that, um, you know, responding to, to complaints so that we, with the cars there and not just shooting fish in a barrel on who's a tree all the time or on, you know, on a three-seventy-eight or, and so on, um, or, or a oak would have. So we, uh, we have been in the neighborhoods, you know, stop signs, uh, red lights, things like that, because, you know, that's important and, and, you know, you don't want people getting hurt. So you want compliance. I mean, really, you want compliance more than anything. So I hope, hope that answered.
Yep. Any other revenue items?
Yep, of interest. Thank you. Um, page eight, I'm looking at the public safety. Um, I did notice it's under public safety, Andy, but, um, you know, once again, the, um, the demolition fees, obviously that doesn't have to, uh, do with our police, but, um, you know, maybe.
Those are the reimbursable demolitions that we paid for out of sixteen-twenty-two oh four probably, and then that's the reimbursement for it from either the homeowner or the insurance company of the homeowner.
And then my last one was page ten. And Chief, you'll probably be able to answer this. I know that we, um, do police traffic services and, and there's a line. If you look under public safety, um, forty-three eighty-nine eleven oh seven, police traffic services. We normally get, you know, very modest, you know, fourteen and nineteen thousand dollars, but this year zero. Is that for RPI and those additional, um, traffic services and why is that zero?
That's a grant that we received. Uh, it was just approved at the October council meetings, police traffic, police traffic services grants. However, what we're doing is, is moving all grants out of the general fund and moving it into the miscellaneous special revenue fund. That way we stop, it's, it avoids repetitive legislation coming to the council of a lot of the police grants and the, that are in the budget have date periods that transcend fiscal years. So we end up bringing them back multiple times by putting them in the new fu, in this fund. It allows for the grant to, to not have to be amended multiple times.
And then my last question on that, so where would we find, like, say, um, you know, TPD is providing RPI up at the Hilton, I know, for events, et cetera. Um, where would that be identified in the budget?
Um, page eight, the last line, A seven thousand twenty-eighty-nine five oh three.
Special event.
Yep.
Which has gone down significantly.
So also in that account is the HBO. That's where we require HBO previous.
Okay. Thank you. Those are my only questions. I'm ready. Thank you.
Any other revenue questions from members? Okay, then let's move on to page ninety, ninety-one.
We had an Andy ninety?
Ninety-one. The increase in the one-on-one line is pursuant to the PBA and CCA contracts for next year with salary increases. Overtime, there is an impact there. The, the change you're seeing there and overtime is as a result of what we just discussed with the grant changes. But all the grant expenditure that would have been in that account has now been moved out to the CF fund or will be in as part of future legislation. Everything else in the one hundred line, one, you know, one hundred codes is, is contractually based. Jump down to, to the
Chair.
Council President.
Uh, yep, a real quick question. Where are we third quarter on OT?
As of today, is overtime through October twenty-seven, twenty-eighth totals one million one hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars.
So we're right about in line.
The last, like, I'm sorry, the last, that's the other item of no vehicles, two hundred twenty thousand dollars is an appropriation to purchase four vehicle, or mark patrol vehicles in the twenty-twenty-three fiscal year, which continues the practice of not having to bond something with a three-year prob, period of probable usefulness. There's some slight changes. Go ahead. I'm sure council members have specific questions about specific accounts on pages ninety-two and ninety-three related to operating expenditures. Um, there's some slight variations up and down throughout. Um, just to highlight some of them, account number three oh three seventeen, other materials and supplies, a budgetary appropriation of five hundred forty-seven thousand eight hundred eighty-five. The principal portion of that is the body worn camera program. That's where the annual payment to Axon comes out of.
Chair.
Council President.
Um, you skipped one, Andy. They did have a question. What's the facilities upgrade, the fifty K?
Uh, some of that is for the police garage. Uh, there needs to be a new roof put on that and a new heating system. Um, and then also it was just some other smaller upgrades that had to be done in the, you know, in the main building.
How's the detective building? Is that totally done now and?
The, uh, you mean
Across the street.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's good. Yeah. We're in good shape over there.
Check it out.
You're welcome. You're welcome anytime. Ollie. Uh, if you, did you want, I could explain a little bit about the, uh, that, that Axon program. So it's not just the body worn cameras. I mean, it's also the car cameras, the, um, the tasers, uh, and so on. So it's a big block, but it covers, it covers a lot of, uh, technology, you know, that we use and, and that everybody wanted us to use. So right? It's true.
Fair point.
And Chair.
Council President.
Yep. On that point, I noticed last year we added a video clerk. And then this year the video clerk's out. Did you find you didn't need the video clerk or?
Correct. Yeah, we, we found that we were able to with, with our sergeant that's in charge of the body worn camera program and the video clerk that we have, we were able to, to, to make do. So we're looking, yeah, we're looking to, to cut it. So
Cool. Thank you.
Sure. We're here to help.
Um, I had questions in the four hundreds, um, four oh three, advertising, printing, uh, rentals, other, and dues and subscriptions.
So the ever, the printing and advertising is we're, we're going to be giving it, uh, an exam next year, a police exam. And we plan really putting it out there, I mean, radio ads and, and, and so on. Like we did, we actually did that um, three years ago when we gave that exam too. And it's just costly. We, we need a new recruitment video done and so on. So it, uh, it costs some bucks.
Chair.
Oh, can we finish these other two items?
Sure.
The, uh, four oh five ninety-one rentals, um, themed up a bit.
Yeah, so the rentals were, our license plate readers are part of that. Um, that's a subscription. They're each twenty-five hundred dollars and we have several of them. I, I don't want to disclose, you know, some, some of that if that's all right. Um, and, uh,
And dues and subscriptions.
So dues and subscriptions are Lexa, Lexapo, which is, uh, it's a program, a software program that's going to cost us some bucks for policies and so on.
Council President.
Um, I apologize. I didn't know that you asked that, um, Chair. Um, going into uniforms, you've cut it down quite a bit. Is there a reason for that, Dan?
Yes, uh, because we don't have as many hires. So, uh, we had anticipated, you know, the hires that we had in twenty-two, but in twenty-three, you know, and, and unless a lot of people leave, right now we have one opening. So we anticipate obviously some more openings throughout twenty-three, but not where we were before. So
Chair.
Councilman Gully.
Let's just continue down that line and just, uh, give us some information on the increase for training and, uh, increase in travel.
Uh, for increase in training and travel was, um, it, it's just costly. I mean, we, we, we're going to be getting the new firearms. That's going to cost money in training. Um, we have, uh, we're, we're, even though Khalil Jameson is, is, uh, is pro bono, it's still costing us some money in personnel and so on to pay for that on our end. Um, hang on a second. Right. Yeah, al, also, uh, ammunition went up like exponentially. Um, and we also have, uh, noble training for all of our BIPOC officers, um, which, you know, that, that's just another, another, uh, expense, so that we're, we're happy to have. I mean, that's something that we want to do for them.
All right, the, uh, travel, one of ten thousand, what's that?
Should have brought my glasses.
One mine.
One mine? Steve.
Yeah.
From thirty-two up to forty-two.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I'm trying to recall that. Right, yeah, some of that was, uh, it, it's, it's an estimate based on us, our detective bureau having to go out and pick up prisoners and, and investigations that leave, you know, I mean, that we, we have to leave the area. And it, as well as, um, there is some conferences next year that there, that we're going to send some of our command staff to that, which is costly. I mean, every, everything went up. So, I mean, you know, like you take an airplane somewhere, it's like twice as much money as it was a couple of years ago.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ready? You got questions, I have.
Okay.
Perfect.
Any other questions for members?
Um, uh, Chair.
Council President.
Maybe, uh, just hit the capital quick. Um, the only capital is the two twenty, which is not being bought in for a landmark.
Correct. The two twenties in the budget. There are other items that have been requested as part of the capital plan, but as we discussed last week, well, that will be evaluated into the twenty-twenty-three fiscal year on a litany of different criteria that we'll, we'll look at them all individually.
Okay. I, I did notice the facility upgrades. We'll talk about that next year, the two forty-five.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other highlights that you want to underscore? Any questions?
Do I have any?
I'm, I'm, I'm opening, opening up to anyone who might, uh, want to comment. Otherwise.
Like twenty-twenty-three, what do you see as, you know, sorry, Chair.
Council President.
Um, you know, Dan and Steve, what do you see as the biggest highlights? Obviously, um, your work with Khalil Jameson has, um, tempered, uh, maybe hidden that. And then, um, just in general, I mean, I must say that community policing, um, you know, we've, we've put some, you know, effort, money, more police into, um, that, what do you foresee in, in the upcoming year?
Uh, I see a lot of successes in, in the police department. I mean, uh, you guys, uh, allowing those additional six officers was huge. Uh, we were really able to, to create a robust community police unit, and it's been so well received by all the neighborhoods. Um, and those officers are really making a difference, uh, because they're able to take that time and, and figure out, you know, problems that are, that are not something that you can handle with just a, a car showing up, you know, trying to take care of it, and then they're off to the next call. So they're really, really making some headway. Um, and like I said, they're very well received. We've also started doing, um, you know, like pop-up barbecues and things like that up at Geneva Pompey Park, School Two, Carroll Hill. Uh, we want to hit the Little Italy neighborhood, you know, in, in the, uh, the market block there, the market area. Um, so we planned on doing that before school started and we just, we just couldn't get it done, but we're, we're going to do it in the spring. Um, we also just, uh, we recently, uh, and I think, I think you guys might know this anyway, but we started a two-person, uh, mental health unit that's responding to all of our, um, pickup orders. So our nine forty-fives, our nine fifty-eights, our nine sixties and so on, uh, which is really helped alleviate a lot of call volume for the regular zone officers. So the zone officers can do more regular police work. Um, and those, those officers also, and they're, they're committed. I'm really happy. You know how, how our department works. It's a bid, you know, I mean, by seniority, and we lucked out that the two people that got the job um, are really committed to it. Uh, they're very compassionate officers. Um, I've been with them and, and met with county mental health. They've met with, uh, Samaritan Hospital, Unity House, Joseph's House, and so on, and really building those relationships. So I think that that, that's huge, uh, for, for our culture, you know what I mean? Because our, since we have everybody pretty much, uh, trained in CIT, um, it's kind of our thing. We have so many calls involving emotionally distressed people that we want to be the best we can be when, when we have to respond to those calls. So um, it, it just, it says a lot for the officers that are there. We get not patting ourselves on the back, but we get a lot of compliments from, from people like Unity House and Joseph's House and Samaritan Hospital and so on because of the way that the officers treat people that, that are in crisis. And, you know, you need to be patient and, and take your time and, and have compassion, and, and they do. So I'm very, very proud of them. Um, I, I just, you know, I'm happy to, like I said, our, our traffic unit is, is back up and running good. Um, and I just think we're in a really good place. So twenty-twenty-three should, should be a great year.
Thank you.
Um, Chair, I do apologize. On that note, maybe in case folks, my colleagues didn't see it, but that huge grant that we received from the state, um, to put together a mental health team. Um, just so folks are aware, we're the only municipality, the counties receive this state grant funding. Maybe just touch upon that quick.
Yeah, so we received the, the threat assessment management team grant, a TAM, TAM it's called. Um, so it was only us and four other municipalities in the state that got it from, from, uh, the federal government. It goes through the state, but it came from the federal government. Uh, so it was a hundred thousand dollar grant. There's not, um, most of the money has to go for like consulting fees and things like that, but we're in such a good place already because uh, a lot of other municipalities don't already have those really good relationships with people that you need. So that is, uh, it's paramount that, that you work with your school district, with your, with your mental health, uh, you know, your county mental health, uh, and so on. And so we have SROs in place. We have a great relationship with the school district. We have a great relationship with county mental health. Um, so it's, uh, it's still kind of like in a a beta stage right now as far as the forming the team, but, but the bones are there already. So we're, we're still waiting for some more guidance from the state. Um, and we'll move forward from there. But I mean, it's in, in theory, it's a really great thing because it could stop a lot of violence. So, you know, I mean, you kind of get to the person before they, they commit any violence, you know, and a lot of it is just, you know, a post or a note in school or, you know, something like that, and then you're able to act on it in a variety of ways. It doesn't always have to be law enforcement. Uh, you know, I mean, it could be just the, the person needs to, to talk to a social worker or something, but we'll, we'll be one big cohesive team and, and be able to address those issues. We'll we'll be one big cohesive team and and be able to address those issues.
Wonderful. Great.
Chair.
Councilman Gully.
I only have one simple statement. Chief, love everything you said, except when you talk about those pop ups. There was one area you didn't mention, and that's Lansingburg, so I know that was just a slip and I hope it's on that list.
Jim, I'm sorry.
I know that. I just want to make sure we know that. The spot.
Hundred and twelve Street was a hundred and twelve Street Park was one of the was another one of the places that we were supposed to. To be at, and it just it got time got away from us, and then all of a sudden we were in for a fall and.
Next year, we got the new park in there.
We will definitely, we will definitely be up there.
Fingers for us.
With the new park.
Anybody hear that back there?
Yeah.
Councilmember men.
Um, I was wondering if you could speak a little bit more about your work with Khalil Jameson Consulting Group.
Yeah, so, um, you know, we've been working with them for about eighteen months, almost two years. Uh, they're beginning. Some training with our with our officers. Uh, we've been training all along, but there's some real, uh, training in as part of our in-service. Uh, which worked out well because it saved us. On, uh, on overtime costs, honestly, it so that we were able to tailor it so that they could do the training during our in-service period, so we don't have to then backfill the positions. Um, so they're starting that next week, actually. I I really don't want to speak about what the training is, uh, because that's something that, uh. That Khalil Jameson and us are kind of keeping. Keeping in-house for right now, but, uh. The culmination of everything is going to be, uh, May sixteenth, twenty twenty three. We're going to have a big, uh. I like to call the shindig, uh, at at Bush Memorial.
That'll be part of the Troy one hundred forum, correct?
Uh, is that going to be the same day?
I think.
Okay.
Think that I think that's.
It works out better that way.
I think it is, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I'm excited. Yeah, I mean, it should it should be really good, so we plan on having a lot of officers there and. Being a good time, so. And in the meantime, like I said, we we're we've been building these these relationships and bridges with the community anyway. You know, I mean, with the barbecues and the the reading program that we're doing and. The, um. Community engagement details with the MCC and so on, so, you know, we did like, I think we did like six trunk retreats. This year too at Halloween and it's just, but it's great. I mean, the kids love it, the neighborhoods love it, so. Is, you know. We we enjoy it. It ma- it makes everybody feel good, and so it's it works out. And it's really increased, um. Cooperation too, so it's it's really worked, you know what I mean, that the trust building and.
Great. Well, thank you so much for.
And and just, I would just want to finish, but there might be. There might be some more funding coming to DCJS, so I'll I'll let you know when that comes, but I was speaking with, uh. With the person who runs pub publicity programs with DCJS. We were, I apologize that we had to postpone this a day, but we were in training and, um. And that was one of the trainings, so, uh. I got his ear and and I think they're going to give us some more money for, I mean, it's a it's a sore subject, but for non-fatal shootings. But they they might finance a, uh, an investigator for us, for the DA's office, a crime analyst, and so on, so that would be great. Yeah.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate the support, too.
Chair.
Sure.
Um, I I want to thank you guys for the work you do. Steve. You do a great job, like sending those emails and very and being very informative. On situations and always updating us. I recently, uh, went on a ride along. And, uh, to what Chief, uh, say about the relationship. I could see it. I was with him, uh, the evidence technician. Um, he got out the car. He was interacting with some young people, like some of the young people that I know as well. From, uh, North Central, so, um. And it was a whole different experience being behind the wheel and going to those calls and to what you said earlier, those. Mental health calls are a lot. We dealt with a lot, and sometimes, um. When you have some of those calls, uh, you have an officer from one zone have to speed all the all the way the other side because. You got, uh, a specific zone taking care of mental health call, so, um. I'm excited that we're we're going to get a lot more help when it comes to those nine forty fives.
Yeah.
And again, thank you for what you guys do, and I'm scheduled for another ride along, but, um, it was it was a good experience because. For me personally, um, the people that's out that doesn't really know what's going on. Uh, it gave me a great insight that I can bring back to the community and like. You know, you guys only see a certain.
Yeah.
Uh, certain, uh. Certain view of what these officers do, but you guys, like, you guys do a lot, and I think, you know. I really appreciate you guys because, you know, and just to end it, like, you guys get a call and there's no what telling. It could be a nine forty five, it could be a shooting. There's there's, you just go with, it's basically, you never know what could happen.
Never.
You know, never. And and I and I've seen that on hand, uh, when I I went like. Two weeks ago on my ride along, so I appreciate everything you guys do, uh.
Well, thanks very much, you know, and and I'm glad that you messaged that back. I mean, who, any anybody who does does ride alongs or or, you know, knows a little bit about what we do, it's great to to have it. To have it that way because it's, you know, you don't, you just don't pat yourself on the back, and and that's like Khalil Jameson has been saying, like, we're not very good at saying all the. The good things that we do because you kind of feel funny about saying good things that you do, you know what I mean, so it's great when you can message that. You know what I mean? It it means more coming from. From the council and coming from other citizens than it does coming from us, so thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
You gentlemen.
Now I'd like to invite the Fire Department up. Thank you. And that is page. One oh six, I think. I think it's at page one oh six, Andy. Is that where we're headed? Yes, okay. Welcome, Chiefs. Thank you. Do you want to give us a a brief overview or? Andy?
Thank you for inviting us here. Um. I will echo what the Union President stated. We are a busy department. The number of structure fires that we have in the city of Troy is, uh. You know, it's static. We have had the same number of fires. Uh, actual structure fires. For several years, those fires don't go down. To date, we've had thirty nine structure fires. Those are not. Those are not fires that are. You know. Food on the stove. Those are actual structure fires. Um. Overall, I think that we are up to two hundred and. Two hundred and twenty two overall fires that would include. You know, your structure fires, your food on the stoves, your. Um, vehicle fires, brush fires, anything that's considered a fire, so we're. You know, we continue to be a busy department fire-wise. EMS wise. Uh. We are a thousand calls over this same time period. This year as we were last year, we are a thousand calls. You know, last year, twenty twenty one, we were a thousand calls higher than the year twenty twenty. Uh, twenty nineteen. Twenty nineteen was, uh. Probably one of our our busier years. And right now it's. Um, we have even a thousand or twelve hundred more calls this year than we than we did in twenty nineteen. As far as transports goes, um. Not only are we busier transport-wise, I think that we have. Year to date, we have six hundred more transports, actual transports. But, um, we're transporting to to fewer hospitals. Everybody. Everybody I'm sure realizes that the hospital issue. Um. You know, it used to be, uh, you know, I used to state. Tongue-in-cheek when no one went to the hospital, the city of Troy had three of them. You had Leonard Hospital, Saint Mary's and Samaritan. Now, when a great majority of people go to the hospital, we have one. Uh, it went from hospitals were more. And this is, you know, not not scientific. Hospitals used to be more philanthropic. They used to be built by, you know, pillars of the community. And that model has changed, and now the hospitals are more, uh, they have a business model to them. They're, you know, Trinity Health moved in. They. I'm not exactly certain again, uh, the the. Figures that I heard was Saint Mary's Hospital was at sixty percent capacity. Samaritan Hospital was at sixty percent capacity. They added a wing to Samaritan. Closed it down, closed down Saint Mary's Hospital, came up to ninety percent capacity. They run it very efficiently. And from a business model, it makes sense, but from a. From a public safety standpoint, it it. It hurts. Uh, the city of Troy is not unique. The Northeast is not unique. I think that this is a trend. It's it's a it's a national trend that everybody, everybody's dealing with it at this point. Um. On top of that, on top of, uh. The, everyone going to the different hospitals. Uh, going to one hospital, when one hospital gets shut shut down for they don't have beds upstairs. Creates a longer transport time. The pressures that are created from not having beds upstairs get pushed down to the emergency department. The emergency department starts to stack up when our guys transported, you know, uh, into the emergency department. Instead of being able to walk right in and grab a bed and turn over the patient and get back in service, they are, you know, they're they're sitting up to the hospital waiting to. Turn the patient over to definitive care. It's, uh, and it is, it's an issue. I I don't, I don't have the answers to that issue. If I were able to solve that problem, I would not be sitting here in the city of Troy. I would. I would be in a in a different, in a different atmosphere, you know, solving problems nationally. Um, as far as our facilities go. We have a million dollar, uh, facility upgrade down to Station Six. We completed several upgrades to, uh. You know, the latest upgrade was to Station Four. We're trying to get air conditioning into into Station Four. At this point, we're still working to. Have a station built up in the Lansingburg district. There is conversations being had to actually purchase the land, so that is moving forward. We have rough, we have rough drafts on what. What size station would be able to. To fit on that piece of property. As big as that piece of property looks to us, as far as modern day, uh, fire stations go, it's considered a post-it stamp. It's, it would be, it'll be a two. A two-story station. Because they're not able to fit everything on one story in that in that small area, so we're. You know, the, there is money allocated to purchase the property and to get construction drawings, but. You know, we're first, we have to purchase the property, and so, you know, like I said, there's conversations being had. Um. Other than that, there sometime in twenty twenty. Three, we just took delivery of of one ambulance, and this budget calls for a another ambulance. Uh, we have an aerial device that has been ordered. It should be arriving sometime in in twenty three. The aerial devices are, uh, you know. You know, ladder device or hook and ladder. You know, they're, uh. You know, that that's been ordered. Unfortunately, what used to be a nine-month turnaround for an aerial device turned into. At least thirteen months. And now it's up to sixteen, eighteen months. You used to be able to buy an ambulance. You used to be able to order an ambulance and have one in. Three months. Three to five months. They're 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 a year out as well, so everything is, everything is being pushed back. But that's, uh, that's basically it. That's, uh, you know. A thirty thousand foot view of the fire service. Uh, as far as staffing goes, I would, I have to address the staffing, obviously. We are down thirteen members. And we're making, uh. We. Have altered our hiring criteria to make hiring, uh, less. Less of a hurdle. Uh, the city of Albany. The city of Albany is looking for twenty people. The city of Schenectady is looking for twenty people. The city of Saratoga is looking for at least sixteen people. There's not that many. We're going to be looking for at least fifteen, maybe even twenty. By the time everybody retires and and shakes out for. Uh, twenty twenty three. So, uh, there's not, that that's eighty, that's eighty firefighters. There's not that many paramedics in the, uh, in the capital region, so we decided to. Forego the paramedic requirement, and we will, uh, we'll train them and train them here in the city of Troy. We're gonna, uh, it 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 seems like we're moving backwards, but it's a necessary move. We had to, we had to remove that to make hiring. Uh. More feasible.
Chair.
Councilman Gully.
Chief, i- is there, is there a current list? Are you waiting to do another exam? Because it seems like I haven't seen an exam or heard of a list. In a while. How does that, how does that play out for you guys?
So we removed the, we removed the paramedic requirement. We re-canvass the list. We have, right now, we have five candidates that we're moving through the process. To hopefully get into an academy in early twenty twenty three. Um, we're reaching out to different places right now to find out where we can get an academy. The earliest academy probably will be the city of Albany's academy in in February. That'll put them on, you know, back in station. With enough time so that we could take them and put them into paramedic school. Go right from. You know, right from the academy. Right into paramedic school, so so that's that. The list, I'm being told, the date has just come out, and it, I believe. It is late February for a firefighter exam. So what the actual date is, I'm not exactly certain. I was just told that. In a, in a passing conversation, so late February, early March.
So Chief, one other question, uh, as mentioned. By Eric Wisher earlier, uh, and we realize that we talked about this, um, doing a study on the ambulance process in. In your department and, you know, just trying to overlook that and, um. I just heard tonight I said it was never done. Uh, is there a reason why that was never done or never put out, or why we're why we're not moving forward to try to get some answers on that problem that we face?
You you would have to speak to the mayor about that. That that comes out of the mayor's office.
Chris, would you have any answers on that? Okay, thank you. All right, great, thank you.
Chair.
Council President.
Yep, um, to dovetail, obviously, um, you know, I've been asking for an update on. The RFP since the council appropriated prior to this council, and. Listen, we all know it's on the show. Um, you know, twenty five years ago, I was on the council when the city-run ambulance was put into place. As you mentioned, Chief, and, you know, I'm not certainly pointing fingers at you, but. We all know the demographics have changed, um, hospitals have changed. Um, and certainly services have changed. Um, twenty five years ago, you're looking at robust private ambulance. Um, you know, it fast forward twenty five years. It it has changed dramatically, the whole hospital system, et cetera, so. Um, that RFP was critical, and the reason we talked about the appropriated money. For that RFP was to do short-term, long-term. Short-term, we will appropriate funds to address the staffing shortages. And, uh, the staffing crisis, and then long-term, the whole game plan was, okay, we'll have this study. And, you know, I I I hate studies, but a study is needed from an unbiased. Um. Firm, whatever, who does these to at least come in and look at our city-run ambulance service, so. Um, you know, I'm I'm truly, truly upset that that RFP is not going out the door. And, um, when I spoke to the mayor, I wish the mayor was here, the the mayor stated he would have, he he doesn't know how. Or what to put into that RFP. I mean, obviously, other municipalities are, you know. I mean, obviously, other municipalities are, you know, looking at their fire departments. So, you know, maybe Chris will get the mayor and we can get an update on that. But, you know, it's, um, it's critical because we keep kind of putting the bandaid on an issue that needs to be addressed. I guess my overall question, Chief, do you feel, um, the comptroller, uh, looked at our budget? He did not, you know, put red flag up or anything, but did see that, um, they felt, and I think we're a little, I'm a little concerned. Do you feel that we'll be able to fill enough vacancies, you know, over the next three to six months to at least get us, you know, through half of the year? And obviously, we're putting money in the budget, we, uh, appropriate ARPA money for the staffing, um, issue to dress overtime, whatever. But do you feel confident that we'll be able to fill enough vacancies to at least address twenty twenty-three, uh, some of the issues?
Well, we, we removed every, every criteria to hire people. You, you know what I mean? There, 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 there will be no, there will be nothing to stop us from hiring. When, when I was hired, and the only, the only thing that I can state, when I was hired, I came, I took an exam. I scored high enough on the exam, and fortunately, I, I was, I was hired. The city gave me my EMT training. They sent me off to a fire academy. I decided that I wanted to become a paramedic. It wasn't a requirement at that point. And the city sent me to paramedic school. So much is, a, a lot has changed since then, granted, but a, at this point, there's, there's no, I, I don't see. One, one of the major hurdles that we had to hiring was the paramedic requirement. And it served us well for seven years, but at this point, it's, it's become a hindrance. Um, everyone is dropping their paramedic requirement. City of Albany never had one. City of Schenectady, they are moving in that direction as well. Everybody's competing for the same, everyone's can, can, competing for the same, for the same pool, and they all see that the writing's on the wall. I, I don't, I don't see us not fielding enough people that take the test that we, that we will not be able to hire. Thirteen, thirteen sounds like a, it, it sounds like a big number. I think that the reason why thirteen sounds like a big number because we are, we are very busy at this point. However, seven years ago, we hired fifteen. The assistant chief sitting next to me, he comes from a class of eighteen. You, you know, so these are, these are, you know, it's not, it's not uncharted. You know, we, we, we've been through these, we've been through these times before. The fifteen that we hired, no requirements. The eighteen that we require, that we hired, there were no requirements. So I, I think that, you know, will we be able to fill our ranks? We absolutely will be able to fill our ranks. I say that to say this, though. It's going to become a management nightmare. It's, you know, we, uh, you know, we're, we're going to have to, we're going to have to figure out how to get them trained to firefighter, trained up to paramedic. And, uh, you know, get them out on the street. And, you know, Rich and I speak about it all the time. And, uh, you know, we have lots of, lots of ideas and, and ways to, uh, ways to manage it.
To dovetail that question, how many weeks for firefighting? How many weeks for paramedic? And, um, also, do you know, and Andy may know, uh, comparison with other municipalities? Because obviously, the city-run adds duties to our firefighters, the pay comparison. Five questions.
Lot of questions. So we removed every, every qualification from people coming into the fire department. So it's going to be five weeks to get them to, up to EMT. It's going to take eleven to sixteen weeks to get them through a fire academy, depending on which fire academy we send them to and what qualifications we want them to have when they come out. And then, paramedic starts at one time of the year, starts in September, August, late August, early September. And it is nine to ten months, period.
Can they, um, perform their duties as firefighters, um, without the paramedic? Or do we have to wait for the paramedic for them to perform their duties?
We're gonna, it, it depends, it depends on the span when they get out of firefighter academy. The, in a perfect world, they'll get out of the firefighter academy, go right into paramedic school, and we won't have to worry about those issues. If there's a lag time, if there's a, a two-month gap, three-month gap, we will, we'll put them in service. We will, you know, we'll train them up to become EMTs. Lots of ambulance services run EMT drivers. And we will pair them up with a paramedic, and we will, uh, and we'll get them out on the street. And they'll count towards the manning. And when it comes time to send them off to paramedic school, we'll send them off to paramedic school. I also have to state that we have a seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars, seven hundred fifty thousand dollar FEMA grant to take these, to take these firefighters and train them up to the level of, to the level of paramedic. All right, so that's, that's going to impact our overtime budget. That, that overtime budget, we front the money, we send a bill off to FEMA, and they, they cut us a check. You know, three days later. We've done it before, and it was a very successful program.
And the pay?
I don't have that one.
Okay. Can we maybe just try to get that, maybe?
Somewhere.
Yeah. And, and then just, um, overall, um, lastly, uh, Chief, um, Chief, I, oh, the list, you don't feel we'd be able, that on the list, there's not fifteen, sixteen on the list, just five right now?
We, we re-canvassed that list just to let everybody know that if they want, if they're still interested, we removed the paramedic, uh, requirement, and we got five people from that list. So that would make, that would make a total of, I think, eleven from this list. If we hire, if we hire all five of the people that we're getting now. And so that, that's where we're landing right now.
Are you able to pull from a third list when they take a test like in Albany? Are, are they eligible Saratoga, Schenectady, Troy, or?
Y- yes, but no. It, it's, it's, I, I'm not exactly certain what you're asking. So there's cross filing that goes on, all right? And so when a, when a candidate sits for a test, they pay twenty-five dollars for the city of Troy, twenty-five dollars for Albany, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five. And they're on everybody's list. So we were able to pull off of them. Uh, on our list, we had, you know, several, several candidates that were also on the Albany's list. They were also on the Saratoga list. So that's, that's one thing. But you may be, you may be talking about, uh, like a lateral transfer, is that?
Well, no, I, I actually was.
Oh, right, okay. Okay. Yeah, so, so we, um, this, I think Albany had, uh, however many Albany had, we had, we shared, we shared several candidates, and some went to Albany and some came to Troy.
Thank you. Councilman Gully? Okay. Okay.
Chair.
Councilman Bigroll.
Um, if you can email me, uh, some of that information, because, um, I have like some, yeah, I have some, uh, and we can talk after some job fairs and stuff like that, that I can.
You and I have, right, yeah, so, you name the time and the place, and I will, I will be there, sir.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Andy, you want to run us through the, uh, revenues and then the expenditures? Thank you, Chief.
Page eight, ambulance billing revenues, I'm, I'm gonna take a guess.
Thank you, yes.
Middle of the page, it's budgeted for two million four hundred fifty thousand dollars. Similar to traffic fines, the, that estimate was done based off of carrying your collections and annualizing what we've seen year to date. With having the ARPA-funded, uh, ambulance, big ambulance, running. It, it was best, I thought, to only use the courier data and annualizing, annualizing that number, so.
You're talking ALS?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions from members on the revenues? And moving on to one oh six?
Chair.
Council President.
Um, Andy, do you know how many, um, or maybe the chief knows, how many firefighters have left from, uh, the last budget, you know, retired?
I, I don't know off the top of my head. I can get you that information.
Thank you.
Let's go on to page one oh six. What exactly do you want to know, like how many?
Oh, my question, um, from twenty twenty-two, um, uh, from last year's budget to this year, how many? So you figure the year of twenty twenty-two. Thank you.
So going to page one oh six for the expenditures. Code one is obviously contractual, um. I will note, if you look at page one oh, one ten, there's two different salary savings lines. So the council's aware, the first one is fifty thousand ninety-seven dollars. That is step increases next year. The second one of three hundred eighty thousand two twenty-three is accounting for the safer grant that the chief mentioned before, um, that will be accounted for in the CM fund. That's netting all that out. That's an accounting recognition that needs to occur for that grant. So that's what that three hundred eighty thousand dollars is. Uh, going back to page one oh six, uh, count two oh three, a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for other equipment. That's to buy, these two separate things, do physiocontrol. Is to buy two wife packs along with fifteen cardiac monitors, along with replacing ten sets of turnout gear next year. Is what accounts for that hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Some, the increase in other materials and supplies. The three oh three account is ten thousands, that's for ten thousand, that's ten thousand dollars, that's for regular operations. Three oh three nineteen is the line that's specific to ambulance. Uh, the increase of fifteen thousand dollars is based off of rising costs. Going on to page one oh seven. Any fluctuation in accounts is based off of rising costs that we've seen. The four oh nine line is the third-party billing services for ambulance billing. They handle all aspects of billing for the city. And then code eight is benefits, as we've discussed throughout the hearings, uh, the increases that we've seen there.
Chair.
Council President.
Yep, um, the training I take is the paramedic. Yep.
Well, well, that's also to hire them, send them to the academy and the paramedic. It's, it's, uh, it's a combination of, of everything.
Okay, um, and I did notice uniforms. That's good, because obviously, we're hoping to get more men and women. Um, one of the things I noticed, Chief, the repairs on the three oh four line, um, is cutting here. And, um, is, is that because you just feel we won't need it, or?
We're, we have a new engine in this budget. We have a new aerial coming that's going to be delivered. We have three new engines in service right now. We have a brand-new ambulance. The hope is, the hope is that as our equipment becomes newer, the repairs to that equipment diminishes.
Good. We like to see that. I'm throwing you softball here and there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions from members? Okay, um, just give you an opportunity to wrap up. Um, I don't hear any other questions from members?
Oh, Chair.
Except the council president.
I'm sorry, I did have one last question. I noticed, um, in the revenue, uh, the AFG. Is that, um, we received a grant in twenty twenty-one, I think. Is, is that a firefighter grant, the AFG?
We did.
Yeah.
We did. That was for cardiac monitors. We replaced just about every single cardiac monitor that we had. And what's in the two oh three budget are for the last two that we were, that weren't, we weren't able to replace that. There wasn't enough money in the budget, so we're.
Gotcha. Um, you know, just a comment, I, I do want to applaud the department. Um, you've been super aggressive, going after grants. You've been pretty successful, Chief. And so whoever, you know, is assisting you in the grant department has done a, a really fine job.
Well, that would be Kevin Kilgallen. He did, he just did a, a fantastic job. Uh, wrapping up, I just want to say that, um, the amount of questions that I got, I, I feel as though I should make myself more available to the city council. Uh, I believe everybody has my cell phone number. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out and, and, and ask me. Our guys, they are a busy department. They do do a fantastic job. This year, we have had, you know, several rescues. We've had, you know, e- everything from river rescues to rope rescues to, you know, uh, uh, fire rescues. It, it's a busy, it is a busy, busy department. Um, this budget, it, it's, it is a, uh, a minimalist budget, to be totally honest with you. Thank you very much for the support. I know that, that everybody here has support for the fire department, and it, it is much appreciated.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Andy, you get the last word. You're good. He's good. That's his last word. His, his last word is, he's good.
Be safe.
You're good, we're safe. Yes. Thank, thank you all.
Chair, motion to adjourn.
We have a motion on the floor to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second. All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Thank you.
We're in it.
Thank you, everyone, for participating. Thank you, guys. Keep up the great work. Now, oh, um,